Your raise hand function. For the orderly and fairness arranged speakers, I asked the staff to clear. The raise hand signals for members and now members, please press the raise hand function in soon. I'll invite the Mr. Ed without a secretary to make his opening remarks before the open of questions. Secretary. And and Japan chairman, I will briefly introduce our key tasks under the commerce industry and tourism areas in the current financial year. There are three major directions. Well, first on the. Current pandemic, we shall I will continue to support the enterprise of all sizes, especially those who are hard hit, for example, for. The especially hundred percent financing scheme that start applicant, invite applications on person April after increasing our commitment. We have also re. Expanded the scope. Since the launch of this game, we have already approved. Over a hundred billion dollars and just this week alone. We have received. Forty seven point four billions in applications. Therefore, this is a timely relief. Besides supporting the SMEs. We were. We are also continuing as support to the tourism industries for the past seven rounds of the AEF. We have provided three point four billion dollars in subsidy. This and haven't include. This year for the extra. Funding for the Hong Kong tourism board for the overall suspension to be one point two billion dollars. And through the Tourism Commission. Would been. Are promoting heritage travel. So that's the subsidy for the. Hard access industry and second, we also have the employees to seize the opportunities in the mainland. The mainland has become one of our key markets in our external trade and this continue on the theme of the GBA development under the fourteen fifty plan. Hong Kong has been given as special roles. And and where we have particular strength would help to we can tap into the mainland market. And with the. TDC funding, we have boosted the venture mainly for the support scheme for mainland enterprises. In order to tap into the markets. And will cover with the mainland and it's built and wrote initiatives for the annual suspension from forty million heavy buses to six hundred million. The extra funding had reached over eight hundred million. This is for the mainland markets. And for the fourteen fifty plan, for example, the new roles, for example, the intellectual property trading hub. We've added eighty million in recurrent funding for the intellectual property departments. So this is a new expenditure under the budget. And next we're having Hong Kong companies to go global. It's asked about and wrote initiatives. Since first of January this year. That. With the. Our CEP will hope to tap into the opportunities. L D fifteen economies, they met up of seven, over seventy percent of trade with Hong Kong. And. They're also having a high growth rate and become the growth momentum in the region. Therefore, we are working harder on this. Well, besides working through the TDC and invest Hong Kong and overseas ETOs. Will relates with professional organizations and chamber of commerce to see these opportunities. So that. That's really the key initiatives in a nutshell. I'll be happy to answer his members' questions. Thank you, secretary. Nineteen members indicated their intention to speak and read out the list. I guess maybe I can only accommodate seventeen members to for please make good use of the time. Let me read out the order. Mister Champui Ling, Mister Kenneth Fuck, Mister Lam Siu Lo, Mister Tony Che, Mister Edmund. And what like to you pack long, Mister Frankie Yek, Mister Lam Chenching. Mister Sunny Ten, Mister Dennis Lang, Mister Shu Cafe, Mister Miss Hong Wen, Mister Lee Chen Kung. Miss that M K Chung, Mister Look Chung Hong and Mister Holden Chow and Mister Chow Man Kong. The first invite Mister Chan Pui Lang. And thank you. I would like to follow on my two questions. CDB oh oh two and oh three. First, let me start with oh oh two. Now, let's ask about the Chris terminal, the very response. Invoked the Tennessee agreements and extended contract to to five years to May twenty twenty eight. For the when does it least extension happen? During negotiation, you consult the stakeholders and the public. And second. Well, in view of the, it was done in view of the epidemic, when things returned to normal post COVID. Will you? Do with the Chris operator at the same way, the Chris terminals as well situated, however, due to huge inconveniences. At this low patronage, what is the future positioning of the terminal? And how do we better utilize its resources to exercise? This charge is rolled beyond Chris terminal for oh oh three. The administration did not respond directly to my question number three. And the response it claimed that it would gradually relax the social distancing to reopening the two theme parks. And hopefully you would reopen about on trees with the mainland and the Macau before reopening our borders. Overseas to boost the patronage of the two theme parks and view of the development is sim. That is a long way to go before reopening our borders and boundaries. Due to the normalization of COVID, in terms of the strategy for the two theme parks. Would there be any fundamental adjustment? Thank you, secretary. Oh, I forgot to say that each member should have four minutes speech, so though. At secretary, please be quick. I'll let the tourism commissioner to take the first question. Thank you, Chairman. About six months ago. We reached an agreement with the terminal operator to extend the tenure for five more years. And this option. Was stated in the Tennessee before extended lease with consultant stakeholders, for example, the two cruise operators. And the service providers at the terminal. If not due to the pandemic, according to the current contract, there was an. Option to extend if not for the pandemic. And considering the continuity of the operations. And to reopen a terminal for prospect. Cruise operators to book berths and so on. We will follow a slight procedure like open bidding. Thank you. Second question that we all know the answer. Under the current circumstances, the two theme parks are tourism facilities. Besides welcoming the local residents who hope to receive tourists as well in the short term. We simply have to accept the reality. Take last year, for example, when a two theme parks were able to reopen. The local tourists fill up much of the capacity for the two theme parks in last year. Received a record proportion of local visitors. That's due to improving the service to local residents whilst taking within the anti epidemic guidelines. Well, for the strategy. We hope to reopen to different places. So where the tourists return that we can have the operations back to normal. That's our coping strategy at the moment. Thank you, secretary. Due to technical reasons, the first member should be Mister Chairman Call. And now we are now reverting to him. Thank you, Deputy. Good morning, Secretary. I'd like to ask for CDB oh one three. I would like to ask for specific figure. In the response. There. Were just some general figures. I would like to drill down for the past three years. When helping the professional sectors and the Hong Kong companies, for example, the expenditure and the manpower. I believe that you have done a lot, however, I don't believe that you do not have the relevant data at hand. This question was raised by eight other members, however, only January answers were given. For the past few years. For the Hong Kong companies and entrepreneurs and the professional services, how many need? Do you know the number? I wonder if you have an estimate while scrutinizing the budget. We need to perform available money analysis. If the data is not given, how do we gauge that your work is effective? I hope the administration can explain. Well, the nine other members also care about the one hundred thirty five million. To promote the support scheme for pursuing development in the mainland. We are very concerned about this, but the administration response. There's hardly any difference from the budget speech. I received a feedback from the mainland Hong Kong businesses associations. But shouldn't we start with those associations on the ground already instead of rely on the TEC? Itself. I hope the administration can tell us the specific arrangements. I wonder if you can provide a recurring project funding for these. Associations and Chamber of Commerce to help Hong Kong businesses and entrepreneurs and professional sectors to tap into the mainland domestic market. Secretary, and first invite a TDC CEO to talk about the support scheme in the mainland. But besides the GOGBA. And also by working through TDC and invest Hong Kong and the mainland each or this a new scheme and new. Experience, then I will respond to other aspect. Miss Fang, and thank you, Chairman and Secretary. For the support scheme for pursuing development in the mainland. By working through the thirteen TDC office and different stakeholders, these definitely include. The different Hong Kong Chamber of Commerce and professional organizations. And on and youth entrepreneurship associations in the mainland, however, many others are stakeholders as well. Including the foreign. A chamber of commerce, a media. And the different municipalities departments, they can all help us. To. Answer inquiries and help Hong Kong businessmen in mainland to address the different challenges and requirements. We already started. As you work with the Hong Kong businessmen in the mainland to organize seminars. And conduct a surveys.
We have already started our work last month in conjunction with Shanghai. We already contacted them and asked them. What they would need and this Thursday in Beijing, we're going to do the same. I can assure members that it's not just the TDC which will be doing this, but will be working closely with some. Different business organizations which know Hong Kong people well, so that we work together with them. Thank you. You don't have enough time for the rest of your questions. So would you be giving a written reply? Well, Mister Chow was asking. About this. In fact, it's hard to distinguish between Hong Kong businessmen, professionals and so on. So we do. Do not have that very detailed breakdown or delineation, but then. What members are most concerned about is about upgrading and also transformation. And recently. We already injected more funds into that BUD fund and out of the two billion dollars are some one point five six billion. But then have been spent on the maintenance and in fact, members are also concerned about secret service agreements, some modification and some. Specifically, a concern about professional qualification, including securities, real estate and so on. So we'll be targeting different professions and we will provide tailor made services for them. Next, Mister Kenneth Fuck. Thank you, Chairman Bureau Director. I'd like to follow up on. Intellectual property that is about IPD. I'm sorry. Is some zero six six. And as you said, in next three years, a total of. Some eighty five million dollars worth of contracts will be. Allocated and some twenty five N C S C will be engaged. So they will be a patent officers. So I'm. I T I P D in dealing with some patent registration and so on. Well, apparently they can only help with the. The some of the initial work. So you will have to have more people to help out with the rest of the process in order to provide more services and also. Speed up the processing time. In fact, according to many of the stakeholders for the I P D. And power. Well, there is a severe shortage of manpower. So for the new permanent establishment, so what are the duties? So will you increase the distribute? Will you be hiring more manpower in order to help with the distribution of work? Well, according to our understanding, well, patent officers are really acute shortage. And in order to make sure that there will be, there will not be any mismatch of funds, where there are funds without the person in charge and so on. So will you be doing more about this? Thank you. Precisely in this year's budget, overall speaking, we do have a cap on the overall establishment for the civil service, but an I P D. Has been able to get additional resources in particular to cope with what we started in twenty nineteen. That is about trademarks, patents and designs registries and so on. And under the fourteen five year plan, Hong Kong will also be turned into. An IP center and therefore I'll be referring to the director of IPD to tell you exactly how the eighty five million dollars will be spent. Yes, director. In promoting Hong Kong's development into an IP center, well, we have to. Tap into our strengths. Well, under the new system. We have to ensure that we'll be able to complement our past efforts. Yes, new resources have been allocated to us in order to do this new work. And we have also hired a professional fitting officer. So that we can increase our capacity. We're talking about a patent examination. Because in various aspects, we have to increase our ability to scrutinize such patent applications. So we hope to do this by way of hiring more examiners on non civil service contract terms and also for. Civil service post would also be created so that we will conduct a recruitment exercise to enhance our work on patent. Examiner. So two will be senior lawyers and also two clerical officers would also be engaged and they'll be. Dedicated to post for patent examination. We'll be liaising closely with the sector in order to understand what they need us to do in order to help them. So we will make sure that our resources will be used in the right areas. With regard to the new task, we'll be stepping up our efforts in order to tie in with the needs. Next. Mister Lam Shu Lo, thank you, Chairman. I'd like to follow up on. Um, C E B C E B B twenty one. That's a question asked by myself. With regard to training for the tourism sector, some sixty million dollars will be set aside for some twenty thousand tour guides and so on. So training will be offered to them. First, you are looking at the long term needs of the tourism sector and I support that. But then with regard to the epidemic, because of the changes. Many of those are in the tourism sector will have to change jobs and therefore the first follow up question that I'd like to ask is, do you have figures? In relation to those, I would like to switch shops. How many of them would like to change jobs? And if they'd like to change jobs. Then when it comes to training, there is a chance that distant water might not be able to help put out a near fire. So how are you going to help those who are in the sector? And they'd like to change jobs. What kind of training are you going to offer to them? The second question. Is that, well, I've also asked this. So have tertiary institutions have been involved in training for two guys? And in the government's reply, you just said that the city you. Will be coming up with mobile apps on that. I'd like to find out more. What will that do? So in terms of conservation tools and also heritage tools and so on, have you been working with other institutions in promoting or launching this? Because according to the government's reply, so that is the city user school of culture. Of the and so on. So what are you going to do? Well, um, in our reply, that is some in a second last paragraph of answer twenty one. What is sixty million dollars set aside for subsidizing the training for the tourism sector able last for three years? So we are not really focusing on the near term. In fact, when there are fewer visitors coming to Hong Kong, the tourism sector will be facing with a very hard time. And there is a need for a transition or try up. But then us out of the seventeen hundred travel agencies, less than a hundred have been have closed down. So if you look at the number, yes, indeed, quite a number of people have been, quite a large number of people have been affected, but then. And we've been doing this, that is under the employment guarantee or employment support scheme. We've been looking at the important posts and also the manpower needed by the sector. And also during this period, as you might have noticed, well, from the vaccination program and also the isolation facilities. We need a lot of manpower and different departments have been liaising with the Tourism Association and so on. So that the those from the tourism sector will be engaged and thousands of posts have been created. And thousands of posts have been filled by those from the tourism sector. But then you have rightly pointed out that is the tourism sector. Will be one of the hardest hit sectors. When the economy revives, when our borders reopen, then a lot of people will be needed. And when the epidemic is under control, much of these can be done and therefore we will continue to work hard on this. So for such training programs, they'll be needed. And Mister Lam also asked about cooperating with other tertiary institutions. Indeed, that has been done. That is for the upgrading or the skill upgrading schemes and so on, that those will continue. And in fact, under the qualification framework, well, we do have established a program. In in conjunction with the vocational training council and so on. So those will continue. We will not just be working with some individual institutions. Next, Tony Chair. Thank you, Chairman. Well, Bureau Director, as you know, I've been very concerned about ocean parks transformation and reform and therefore. On C E B B. C I T zero zero three, I've been asking questions about this. I understand that because of the epidemic. Ocean Park. Might be subject to opening and closing from time to time, but then with regard to the transformation and reform is very important. Because it's not just going to affect ocean top itself, but also the entire development of the southern district. That's the reason why I asked this. So I asked how much money will be given to the ocean park? Or the OPC to do this job? For during this period, there are fewer visitors and also it has to be closed. Because of the epidemic, but then for the transformation work underway. Well, you can also take advantage of the time to do it. So with regard to the progress, I'd like to know more about this, what has been done. And also for the reforms of the ocean park. So has the progress been faster or slower than expected? So can you give us more details? Thank you. Thank you, Mister Tony Chair for your question. I've not been able to get the figures that you just. Read out. But then on the question number three, well, during the last term of this council, funding was approved. And after our discussion with this council on what needs, what needed to be done, the strategy. Towards the ocean park has not changed. Yes, they are facing tremendous difficulties because when they are not even able to open their doors to visitors, then. What else can they do? But then if you look at the upper park and also the lower park in particular, the lower park will be developed into. A more diversified retail and catering and also recreational facility. Well, that has been done as planned. And during this period, they've been inviting. Interested parties to join in the program and they have managed to get some response and tendering, it's tendering work is underway. But then because of the epidemic, a lot of normal work has been affected, but then that has been underway. And the development has been as expected for the upper park. Well, it's more targeted and more thematic and that has been done as well. With regard to the reform within the park, for example, in streamlining manpower and reviewing their needs and so on, I understanding. I honest, I understand that the management has been doing this as well. And in a course of a discussion with the OPC, I think the we have been able to align our thoughts with them. And as you said during this period, we are able to enhance our work, but it doesn't mean that. The entire park has been put into a standstill. Once it can reopen, we can see that visitors. Numbers. Will grow again and they would also have to work with governments anti epidemic initiatives and therefore. There are some constraints under zero sixty six three is about ETOs overseas. Well, I noticed that the establishment has been that there are two hundred and thirteen. So there are two hundred and thirteen posts and yet we only have about a hundred and eighty. So for the ETOs. Is it that you have not been able to get as many people as you wish to be stationed there? I think the situation is more or less the same as before, but then indeed during the epidemic is. Kind of hard to get people to report for duty. And it might take a bit longer for them to prepare for such a posting and it's also not mandatory. And therefore, we will have to respect the wish of the individual officers. But then if you look at the number of ETOs, the number has also grown and therefore the demand for manpower would also be higher. But then the practice has been more or less the same as before. I don't see any change. Next, Mister. Well, Mister Wong Chun Chek, thank you. My question is. Indeed, the same as this, the same as Mr. Lam Shu Lo, that us zero twenty one, some sixty million dollars will be set aside for some twenty. Thousand tour guys and tour leaders and so on, training will be offered to them. And the Bureau Director also said that he didn't have the figures yet as to how many people have joined or how many people have changed jobs. So if you check with the figures for the registration or renew figures, in fact, the number has come down very substantially. So if you check with the figures for the registration or renew figures, in fact, the number has come down very substantially. And the tourism sector is a very special industry. We do have a full time to leaders and tour guides. But then a large number of them worked as freelancers and therefore. When they leave the trade, they can always go back again. So my question for the Bureau Director is that the twenty thousand places with sixty million dollars funding. Have you considered the needs for these or the needs of these freelancers? Because they are taking a very big share in the manpower of the tourism sector. And if they all leave, then how can the trade grow healthily?
So for the E D B, you have received three hundred and thirty posts for up upgrading. Out of twenty thousand new places, the percentage is miniscule. That's my first question for the secretary for his response. And second question on C D B C I T oh five oh for the tourism commission for the past two years. Have returned seven hundred million to the bureau. Will the bureau? Use the seven hundred million. To promote Hong Kong, for example, conducting sweepstakes or lucky draws. For all this training schemes, we not have any prerequisite or whether they are working full time or part time. The purpose is to train talent. I suppose that both classes are eligible. For the E R B places. Is one of the many training programs. Forty twenty thousand enrollment target, this is quite. A sizable number of places. For the E R B scheme, it's different from other programs. For the. Attendees, if they are able to complete the entire training course, they're eligible for allowances. For those who are unemployed, there will be an extra financial help for them. For Mister Wong's question. On the suspension for the Hong Kong Tourism Board. Well, that's one way to optimize the resources. Over the past few years, we are kept. Into expand and upgrading our tourism sector, no matter how difficult it is. However. And we're not able to launch some programs due to the pandemic. However, we decided to return a subvention to the government for the time being. In reality, for the H K T B expenditure last year, precise direct promotion. Like Mister Wong said, it also subsidized the sector to organize activities like a staycation. Or free local tour scheme. Therefore, we have a suspension for the H K D B to organize this kind of promotions. So Mister Wong don't need to worry about the lack of resources on this. Next, Mister Lightong.
And thank you, Chairman. My question is C E T B C I T oh six nine on the cruise to nowhere. On the pair three mentioned, how do you plan to attract the cruise operators back to Hong Kong? However, the brew gave a single sided answer. It claims that the entity A E F U allocated twenty million. To spend to have the cruise version of spent to redeem. Eligible customers can get a five hundred dollar subsidy, places limited to forty thousand. People and also twenty five million to promote a cruise tourism. But the quarter question on attracting cruise operators returning to Hong Kong, this part wasn't answered. Well, whether they will return to Hong Kong, one of the key consideration is whether Hong Kong can provide a reasonable operating environment. Especially. If there any potential suspected outbreak. How many days the cruise ship would need to stop? According to public health, the cruise that we need to stop for twenty one days. This closure is a huge economic loss for the cruise operators for the. Flains currently flies only the, the circuit breakers only seven days compared to twenty one days. There was not very long for the hotels and the resorts. I there were no twenty one day suspension requirement for them. My S C E D B. How can we play discuss with the Center for Health Protection? To lay down specific requirements to prevent confirmed cases. While the cruise operator would like to have this clear guidance before returning to Hong Kong, the government might take this step before. Having the cruise operators consider returning to Hong Kong. Thank you, Mister Li's question. I'd like to take this opportunity to explain. Cruise tourism, yes, and. Is one newly developed area and where we seeing payoffs before the pandemic. And those who call, there are quite a few cruise operators calling Hong Kong home. In the past, there was about two hundred ish. What calls from Hong Kong. I know things are difficult during the pandemic. When the absence of any tourist or visitors or not allowing anyone. To join on a cruise is difficult to operate. There's a sweater that in last July. We launched a cruise of nowhere to limit it to local residents. In this case. A two cruise line managed to operate them with over a hundred thirty thousand passengers. But the premise is on preventing. Cases, for example, for all the staff are quarantined in, were quarantined in Hong Kong and. Vaccinated. And the two cruise operator are complying all the guidelines. Whereas the passengers required to observe the anti epidemic guidelines. From July to September, the two cruise operator received a hundred thirty thousand of passengers. For the cruise to nowhere. Well, I agree that we need to have a reasonable offering environment before they come back. We can continue to operate their C T N itineraries. As our epidemic situation improves, according to the C E that from late. April onwards, there'll be three stage. Graduate relaxation. The C T N itineraries may resume on the second quarter this year. However, all the guidelines must be abided. In case of staff outbreak. In the cruise ship, we need to consult with the F H B on the quarantine period. The answer given was twenty one days. In the past, we consulted health authorities on the premises of containing outbreaks. Well, if if there are cases report reported on the cruise ship, well, they were traveling this to the lasting we want to happen. And we, of course, be discussing with the true cruise operators. I know that we can't accede to all the requests, subject to actual circumstances and after consultation with the health authorities, we shall make the best arrangements. Next, Mister Chan Seo Hong. And thank you Deputy Chairman. I'd like to follow up on C D B C I T oh two six. Organize and coordinating events in tourism sector to celebrate the twenty fifth anniversary of establishment of the educate S A R. The administration claims that. Subject is safe and public health conditions. H K T B will plan to relaunch physical mega celebration events. Including an elements of the ha twenty fifth anniversary of the S A R. While the pandemics and unpredictable, if the. Measures and guidelines got tightened again, this celebration would not go ahead. Twenty five years anniversary carries a special significance. We need to be prepared both ways. Which. Try to engage the overseas a local. To check part in a celebration, have a consider make use of I T and online media to conduct virtual celebrations. For example, a virtual interactive engagements. So that the mainlanders and locals and the overseas tourists can check part. Virtually in the celebration of the twenty fifth anniversary and what will be the budget for that? If epidemic subsided and to allow physical celebrations. I suggested that the virtual events shows to a significant role and complementary to the physical events. So that those who are unable to visit Hong Kong can take part, experience themselves to experience our vitality and a history and culture. And understand our I D capability to boost their motivation to visit Hong Kong. And thank you, Secretary. And for Mister Chan's recommendation. Well, not just for twenty fifth anniversary of the S A R, or for example, for the. M I C E, you conducted in a hybrid format. I now invite the H K T B to talk about the tourism. Then there's twenty fifth anniversary is coordinated by the H A B. Well, a lot of those are related to the longstanding festivities for the May to July. There'll be mega cultural and economic activities. They will be aligned with the anniversary. For instance, for any major cup promotion are related to the twenty fifth anniversary. We are helping the organizers conduct events through a hybrid format. If the social distancing or measures are relaxed, they'll be great. If not, that would definitely conduct on a hybrid format. And if as the H K T B have launched activities, even though we cannot conduct it physically in Hong Kong. We hope to promote a Hong Kong brand globally, but here I'll defer to H K D B to illustrate. Well, Mister Jane Cheng, for example, we organized the twenty twenty one New Year's Eve, Hong Kong New Year Countdown Concert. And also the Symphony of Lights, we have been broadcasting the events around the world with huge audiences. And. For the events scheduled for this year. Well, subject to the actual social distancing rules, we will conduct it both physically and virtually. And also be transmitting the physical event. We work with the overseas offices. For cooperation, for example, the wine dine festival. And the Hong Kong cycle cyclothron. Next, Mister Yu Park Lang.
And Secretary, first, I would like to thank the government's understanding of the industry woes. Well, for the green and tourism incentives as well as the other incentive scheme. And six hundred million is allocated for the cultural heritage sites, local tour incentive scheme. For the travel agent incentive scheme is subject to the reopening of our borders and boundaries. This subsidy scheme is definitely helpful to the tourism industry revival. I hope the government can add resources where appropriate. The tourism industry hope that that we can restart the heritage tours and the green lifestyle tours. Subject to the assessment of the pandemic situation, while their focus will likely be on the local tours.
So the Tourism Board and the Tourism Sector have been making preparation. So the question is, when we can reopen for business? So for the local tour, so with low infection risk, can we allow travel agencies and also hotels to operate? In order to get more room for operation. So would you be working for us? That's the first question. And also, under the green lifestyle local tour incentive scheme in terms of screening. And processing the tourism sector has found that there's room for improvement. So will you be increasing manpower for that? So that while we're working on local incentive tours, we will be able to get more subsidy so that we can process that more expeditiously. And also Mister Li has been asking about the C T N tours. But then I'm not really that concerned about C T N itineraries. But then, for us to develop into a nation cruise hub. Do you have any specific plan so that there'll be reasonable business environment? So that cruise lines will come back to Hong Kong so that they use Hong Kong as their home port. So that we can develop ourselves into a nation cruise center or cruise hub. Three questions, Bureau Director. Yes, you're right. In that, when we try to help the tourism sector, other than the direct subsidy scheme, that is the three point four billion dollars. In terms of publicity, training and so on, we have spent about one point two six billion dollars on the tourism board. And we're also introducing the cultural and heritage size local to incentive scheme. So there is direct subsidy and there are also, there is also indirect support. So that in the medium to long term, we hope that the tourism sector will not just revive, but also upgrade and transform. Mister Yu also asked about. The situation when the epidemics upside, so that is for the social distancing measures are relaxed. We would also be concerned that for local tours, what is going to happen to them? In the past, local incentive tours have been something that the sector has been working very actively on. For example, other than. Encouraging people to join, well, for those in the trade, they would also be vaccinated first. For example, they would have not just the two doses, but also the booster shot. And also before people join such tours, if they are willing to take the R A T test. So as to ensure that they themselves have not been infected, that would also help the trade. So that for those. Who might be concerned about the limit on the number of participants in each tour. That is a current is set at thirty. If that can also be further relaxed, that would also be good for the trade. So that people can also be rest assured in joining local tours in terms of the. Streamlining of procedures, a lot of those have been streamlined. But then when the tourism sector can. See some problems in individual or isolated cases, we'd also have to be more cautious and prudent. Because in the past, we did have our cases whereby we did have some. Unwanted situations where there were fake reporting and so on. So in terms of the procedure, so we have to be very cautious. And also for the C T N itineraries, indeed, we cannot change the practice overnight. But then in the medium to long term, if we're able to revive the sector. When we look at the G P A. In terms of the planning and also the multi destination tours. Well, we will benefit greatly from that because it's not just about mainland visitors coming to Hong Kong to join such tours. For Hong Kong visitors or. Or tourists can also join these multi destination tours on the mainland. But then in the short term, there might be difficulties when we are not able to reopen our border to each other. And therefore, right now, we are, we are only able to organize C T N tours and that's the, that's the first step so we can go. Mister Frankie Yick. It's about the single window tour, so a single window. Trade single windows. That's the overriding trend. Well, in twenty twenty one, I already urge that to be done. And we hope that. And we hope that we can work with ASEAN countries and then in 20s, starting from 2016, we started to build the TSW, but when compared with Singapore, we're actually lagging behind by some 30 years. And right now, if you look at the trade single window, it's just been completed on the mainland in 2016. But then because of the active promotion by the mainland authorities, they've been able to cover the entire country. And then by the end of last year, they also managed to converge it and align that with Singapore so that in terms of data transmission and so on, the efficiency of our trade has also been improved and that would also facilitate trade between the parties concerned. So we will have to expand the scope of that. But then in Hong Kong, our TSW is still very much in the first stage to implement it comprehensively. We still have not got any target date, let alone converging or aligning with the mainland. So are there any plans to expedite the development so that Hong Kong can be able, can develop into a regional trade center? Yes, Mr. Yip, you already mentioned that in the past, we will have to catch up. Because for all the trade documents and so on, they would also have to be digitized. So I'll refer to Mr. Chan to give you the progress, yes?
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Yu, for your question. Indeed, we've been working full steam on this trade single window initiative. Yes, you're right. Yes, there are three phases. And for the first phase, it's been fully implemented and the feedback from the trade has been very good. And late last year, we already applied to the FC for the implementation of the second phase and we're working on that full steam also. And our plan is set up by 2023, that is next year, we're going to implement this in stages. And for Phase Three, that is the last phase. Well, the budget has also made it clear. That is, the administration has already earmarked 1.4 billion dollars for the development of the IT system of Phase Three. And we are now consulting the trade and also the stakeholders on the implementation details of Phase Three. And by next month, we'll be going to the TNI panel to report on the progress for Phase Three. We expect that we will be able to get the views of the TIP and then we'll go to the FC for funding for the for the development of Phase Three. Thank you. Well, I hope that the administration can come up with a concrete timetable because it has taken too long for it to be done. Next, I'd like to follow up on this. Well, we have had a lot of discussion on this already. That is, other than reviewing our antiepidemic initiatives and also to encourage the ocean or the cruise lines to come back. In fact, the tourism sector would also rely very heavily on passengers from the mainland. It will take quite some time before they'll come back again. So other than our local tours, there is no way that we can develop any further. But then I understand that the Bureau Director would understand that for the cruise operators. They said that if we were to launch deep up and cruise some tours, they would also have to have more parking spaces. But then not much progress has been made so far. So what's your take on this? In fact, another member already mentioned this. Well, for the cruise terminal, it needs a lot of ancillary facilities. We have already given an account to you. That is, in the past, for the cruise terminal, of course, there are parking spaces, but then for people who have to park and then ride on the cruises, I don't think that's the mainstream idea. Because mostly it'll be relying on public transport or through the cruise line some, but in the past, before the epidemic, they've been, they've been doing this. For the cruise lines that have coach buses, there are different routes so that they can take people to different destinations. And before the onset of the epidemic, that has been, that had been working very well. And even during the epidemic, when we resumed the CNTN tours. Many people also did the same because when they took the cruise tours, they would also have to undergo different antiepidemic measures. So a lot of work has been done when it comes to transporter to the cruise terminal. Cruise lines would be working with taxi companies or operators and also coach bus operators so that arrangements can be made when cruises visit Hong Kong or make home calls in Hong Kong. A lot of these will be arranged. Thank you. Next, Mr. Lam Chan Sing. Thank you, Chairman, and Bureau Director, I have two questions on the tourism sector. One is is about the CTN tours. Well, if it's place after it has subsided, well, the circuit breaker mechanism can be relaxed. Maybe you can also require people to undergo the RAT. And also, you can also have the vaccination pass and so on in order to avoid or prevent having the entire tool canceled because of some isolated infections. Because if you'd like them to organize our CTN tours and it have, it has to be suspended from time to time, then that would put a lot of pressure to bear on these travel agencies. So can you strike a balance between the two? Next, I'm also concerned about the 600 million dollars on the cultural and heritage sites local to incentive scheme and also the GLIS, the Green Lifestyle Local Tour incentive to some 1,800 travel agencies and 20,000 tour guides will benefit from that. I don't quite understand it because of a local tour, the number will be limited. And even if you're able to reopen your border, you cannot just relax everything overnight and not many travel agencies will join this program. And I'm also concerned that not many people from the sector will benefit. So can you adopt a two-pronged approach so that at different tourist attractions? You can also encourage those who used to work in the sector to become publicity ambassadors. So that training can be offered to them right now so that they can take some courses or they can also join the qualification framework because many of them have been working at the field hospitals as cleaners and so on. You can also encourage them to rejoin the sector. Even if you don't, you're not able to take on, take on all of them right away. You can also encourage them to become tourism ambassadors that would also help create jobs and encourage more people to go back to the trade. Two questions. First, well, on the Tourism Board Tours and also the staycation programs, it's been very popular. So that's the spend to redeem vacation program. And I think it's been very popular, but then, given the fact that we have to prevent the spread of the disease. While the borders are still closed, it's not easy to implement that and therefore is subject to the epidemic situation. But then we have taken on what your views, for example, during the last round, during the last round of the of the spend to redeem vacation program, well, we didn't introduce that. So some 20 billion dollars have been injected into that so that CTN tours would also be covered by the plan. And that's the staycation delights program. Or the free tour program. And when the epidemic is still very serious, I'm sure you would understand this. And I think two years ago, we started that GLIS, the Green Lifestyle Local Tour Incentive Scheme, that's to help the sector. And also to help Hong Kong residents to have this new tourism experience. We didn't have money on hand at the time. And then through the Environment Bureau, there was another fund and 50 million dollars was suspended to give us a try. And subsequently, that was increased to 100 million dollars. But then, as we set out very clearly, it's a green lifestyle local tour and therefore it has to be green and therefore for cultural and heritage tours, of course, we're talking about thematic tours. And on this occasion, we're talking about a green lifestyle and you can expand it to cultural and heritage size. And that's to expand the original GLIS. From what I can see, it's going to help the sector very much because for those in the trade, they will have to acquire more knowledge. So it's not just about taking people to different destinations. They have to understand the background. The heritage stories and they would also have to have storytelling abilities. They would also have to identify new sites to bring their visitors to. And it's also a very good tourism experience. So that when visitors come back again, that would also be a very good selling point. And that's the reason why we have allocated more funds for that.
So we launched it on a trial basis, well, with the cultural and heritage icons. And based on it, we launched based on that development blueprint. For example, we were at new positions. And we also strengthened the training through the qualifications frameworks. I believe that in the short term, this will become a driving force in upgrading and transforming an industry. It also helps to develop a richer visitor experience. Makes Mr. Sonny 10. I'd like to follow us. Oh, three, eight, oh, nine, oh, seven, two. And for the O three, it's about the BUD fund. But the textile sector is considered, what about the application procedures and the streamlining? The Bureau has done a good job by approving a lot of the applications. On the application form, it states that, well, on the table, there are different of the different categories of the maximum amount of grant improved. The only 5% with only 100,000 below half. There are about 76% or under 1 million. Well, I hope that the SME can get more assistance and usually they would not apply for a huge amount of subsidy. When it has to do with the application design, especially for the small sums application. You can see that the number of applications for a low man funding is quite low. I hope that if we can compress the application timeline to three to four weeks. Second. And for the O three, nine, ECIC. I'm working to also domestic circulation. And approved a lot of export credit targeting to mainland market. I believe that most of the approved or those in more credit worthy and larger companies. Well, however, that doesn't translate into larger orders. While the ECIC offered on the self-financing basis. Is that because we are too risk averse? That we do not ensure some borderline orders. They're willing to take a small clock, take a small loss. However, we can help to take a larger orders. And for O seven to invest Hong Kong in while tend to produce a short video on the mills. And and they'll be promoting a 14 other projects. I wonder if you have the details on this. The first invite my colleagues. For the director of traded industry would talk about the butt fund enhancement measures, then I'll turn over to the ECIC Commissioner, Mr. Terrance Chu. To talk about the new measures, then now I'll hand over to Invest Hong Kong Director to talk about the related projects. And please make good use of your time. Well, each question kind of over lasted for four and a half to five minutes. I will be succinct. Well, for actually review the operations of different funds in the past. We've launched different facilitation measures, for example, from simplification online application system. And obviously, SME reached out and helped the SME to look for the right app scheme and answer the inquiries. We're trying to compress the application sketch and approval time. We will further consider as streamlining procedures for those applying for low amount. And also a streamline their requirement on procurement. I hope that answers Mr. Chan's question. Mr. Chu. Thank you, Secretary. We are quite concerned about a domestic market. Besides working with listed companies. While the hop to SMEs and buyers. We will work with the Chinese counterparts. I hope that they can provide more credit and information on the mainland companies. And second, we're working with banks with mainly exposure to share the exposure risk. And thirdly, we work with a mainland credit information provider. Besides financial information, to see it can get some delivery and transaction data disclosure. We try to enhance our underwriting capacity, but I hope that the three prongs approach can help to enhance the future coverage. Next, Mr. Stephen Phillips.
And thank you. And we will be doing a video with the Hong Kong Research Institute of Textiles and Apparel at the Mills, really focusing on the exciting developments taking place in the textile industry, including recycling new materials and so forth. And that video will be used both on our website, social media and in the events and conferences that we attend around the world promoting opportunities in that area. This also relates more broadly to the sourcing sector where we have lots of international sourcing companies in Hong Kong.
Next, Mr. Dennis Lang. Microphone not turned on. Mr. Lang. We can't hear you. Mr. Lang. Please unmute your microphone. We still can't hear you. And staff, can you please look into it? Mr. Lang, can you try now? We still can't hear you. How about let's have the next member speak first. Next, Mr. Shu Cafe. And thank you, Chair. I'd like to follow up on C E D B C I T O three six. What well, for the for the SME financing guarantee scheme, it seems that the provisioned program is 55 4.3 billion lower than revised estimate. Well, it's had to do with the special 100% guaranteed product. The secretary said that they're allocating over 100 million to support the sector. On behalf of the SMEs, I would like to thank the government and its secretaries and the financial secretary. A lot of it SMEs in the past two years managed to obtain liquidity. And the financial secretary announced that they will continue to sustain the two schemes. The sector need liquidity support as the operating environment is horrendous. And two days ago, TVB, the program talked about the 100% loan guarantee program, worried about a potential abuse. And there was a case of a 200 million dollar fraud. How do we help the genuine windows in need and deter abuse from bad apples? And for the special 100% guaranteed product. In the past, it was a very lax hand. This time. The eligibility is very strict since the launch on the first of April and the. Twenty plus bank start accepting applications just this week alone by our preliminary estimates. That they all that we see applications over forty billion as to eligibility is not expanded and the amount raised it. Since the launch of this game. About forty thousand new applications approved involving thirty thousand companies. Overall. And over a hundred billion dollars of loan were granted. Well, this will help the SMEs to meet their liquidity needs. Mr. Shu has a point. Of course, it very much depends on the repayment ability of the applicants, even though for not default rate is quite low. However, this is not reliable as we yet to reach the repay in the period, especially during the principal moratorium. Mrs. She mentioned. That for the relaunch of the hundred percent guarantee scheme, some feel that the. Applications has become stricter as we have detected potential irregularities and criminal crimes investigated by the police. While we will pursue this rigorously for any suspected fraud and criminal offenses, we will deal with them strictly. The guarantees is made by the government that the banks risk are minimized. However, the bank should. Play the bait keeper to ensure that the applications. And holds water. The SME cannot solve the problem just by loans alone. For example, the B U D funding in the past two years, we have. Make a digital injection of two point four five billion dollars. That the beauty is a direct subsidy, even though the companies need to pay one dollar before they are eligible. Like Mr. Chan said. A lot of the S M is managed to obtain subsidy through B U D for upgrading and transformation. Which we believe that they are confident about the business prospects. For the four years into this current administration, the funding allocated by but have exceeded two billion dollars. And since the formation of the fund, over eighty six percent of the funding were approved in the past four years. Though they also kept performing upgrading and transformation. And if they're confident about their future, they're able to make good use of the time to reinforce their business. For the dedicated funding, for example, B O G. Or a market development fund and the financing schemes are able to offer comprehensive support and well for the E S S scheme as well. Well, this offer comprehends cater to the comprehensive needs of the companies. Next, Mr. Dennis Lung. Can you hear me now? Thank you, deputy. I'll follow up my own questions. C E D B O C I T O two six. The budget allocators sixty million to subset is a manpower training of travel industry for three years. When will the training be launched and how many training places? And what allows to be offered to the trainees? Can you launch it ASAP so that the trainees can. Upgrade a professional some industry and service standards while obtaining allows to help the practitioners to tide over. This unemployment wave. Next, I would go follow up on this C I T O two eight question. As a government and any plans to change the trading fund operation mode? Can the government inform us whether you have allocate additional resources to. Review the self financing. Operating mode, would it pretty a cap on the hiring of the civil servants? Have you been worked discussing with the civil service and the N C S C sheet to enhance doubt? To understand where they're trading from operation mode and the comments on them and what are the views that you received if not. Or you consider launching consultation due to pandemic. They post to workers. Handle of immense workload. I wonder you can improve the support and add more manpower.
Bureau Director, I'll defer to the Tourism Commissioner to answer the question and then I'll ask the. The headmaster, the postheadmaster of the post office to answer this. Well, for the sixty million dollars for three years program. We are actively looking into this to see how we're going to spend this training, these training resources. And in a reply, we already said that. Well, we're actually working with the T I C, the Travel Industry Council, which will use the resources on the. On those practitioners within this year, we expect that we can come up with the concrete plan. Thank you. What about Hong Kong Post? Yes. Well, Hong Kong Post is operated on a trading fund basis. And therefore, we do have a lot of flexibility when it comes to the use of resources. But then we attach a lot of importance to. Running our operation in a reasonable manner. And therefore, we have to look at our development needs in employing our resources during the epidemic. We have encountered a lot of difficult situations and we will maintain very close relation with our colleagues in order to address their concerns. And to make sure that I will be able to continue to operate in this very difficult environment. There was a question about. The operation of the trading fund would run up with review it. We don't have any intention to. Grab up the fund. In fact, Hong Kong Post doesn't rely solely on the P O T F. During the last term of this council, we also. Allocate funding for it to set up this central move center that would also improve its efficiency and increase its revenue. In fact, Hong Kong Post during the past two years or so, it has been standing at the frontline fighting the epidemic by the end of twenty twenty one. When COVID attacked Hong Kong or during the Chinese New Year. Period, Hong Kong posted not suspended service. And in fact, while fighting the pandemic, I'm composed colleagues who would have to run around in different. Areas and over thirty percent of them have been infected during the epidemic, yet the service managed to continue. So that's a great thank you to the colleagues of the Hong Kong Post. And after they have recovered, overall speaking, Hong Kong Post has been able to resume. It's entire service. But then when it comes to the resources that would be needed for personal protection, we have been kept up. We have kept up with what they need. And last year, when we were sending out the the face mask. And also for the surgical mask that we're distributing, we would also have to rely on the colleagues from Hong Kong Post and we will continue with that. We only have less than ten minutes to go before our times up. So I will give. A couple more members to speak before we wrap up. Mr. Lu Chong Hong, Chow Ho, Ho Then Chow, Ah Hong Kong and so on. My apologies to them. You're not able to speak. Next, Mr. Miss Hong Man. Thank you, Chairman, for giving me the chance to ask questions. Well, I think it's a very good timing for us to. Review the situation of the tourism sector before twenty nineteen or in twenty eighteen, some sixty five million visitors came to Hong Kong. But then. A lot of the service demands also help create jobs, but then the negative impact was also obvious for road to see, for example, a very crowded environment and also. Uneven distribution of resources. And as a result of that, the tourism sector did not develop in a very healthy way. And there was also unhealthy competition between the different sectors and so on. So the experience for the visitors was not good. And many people's livelihoods have also been affected. So have we conducted any review? Is it because of the lack of capacity or is it because we have not been able to develop in the right ways? So should we increase the capacity or should we control the number of visitors and how we're going to upgrade the quality of service? And also for the tourism development program, a number of initiatives were proposed, but then this very rosy picture. Might have lost sight of the actual circumstances in order to achieve or meet targets. We will have to review the situation to find out where the problems are. So I urge you to conduct a review so that both the sector and the community would be given a very clear message. As to what was lacking in the past, what needed to be improved. And so that the tourism sector will not be disrupting people's life while it develops very healthily. Thank you for your question. I fully agree. That in light of the pandemic is a good time for us to review the situation. It's not something that has to be done after the epidemic. Back in twenty seventeen, we already came up with a blueprint. And many people said that you might need to update this. In fact, we have done it. And if you look at the blueprint, there were four main directions. And it's not just a topic for the day. We already took into account what Ms. Hong said. At the time, the tourism sector was emerging and there were many visitors coming to Hong Kong. But then, as you said, there were problems and they were already settled in the blueprint. We already talk about diversified development so that our visitors can be. Diversified into different streams instead of just attracting customers or visitors from one sector. Or else the quality of service would not be able to meet their needs. And second, we also need to increase the number of tourist attractions. And while we promote tourism development, we have been working very hard to develop new attractions instead of attracting them to come for shopping and so on. We would also be doing heritage tours and arts and culture would also be one of the elements to be included. And so we would also have to upgrade their experience and we would also have to improve the quality of service. And that's precisely what we have been doing. And during this financial year, we have also got some new initiatives and we've been talking about upgrading. And also upgrading the manpower and also improving the. Operation of the sector. So those are the things that we and the sector would have to face up to. And every year, we've been meeting the. On many occasions, and since twenty seventeen and eighteen, while the tourism sector was booming, we already knew that we could not just. Look at. Increasing the capacity to increase the revenue of the sector. And therefore, during the past few years, we understood that there were different things that were important. We also had to make adjustments. When times were not conducive or not good. And also in the G P A with the multi destination. Development and also the direction that we can take while we integrate with G P A and also arts and culture is another direction to go. And G P A would also give us a very important development direction. That is, Hong Kong could also become an East meets West help. And after the epidemic, we can continue to move in that in that direction. Next, Mr. Lee Chan Kung. Thank you. We all know that the epidemic. Is now subsiding and we hope that we'll be able to re resume or back to go back to normal very shortly. And I think the business environment has to be improved. Well, the election committee has also got a representative representing the mainland and Hong Kong. And you're talking about different major cities and they are the chambers of commerce in different cities and during the fifth wave, they've been very helpful. For example, in Shanghai, the epidemic situation has been very dire and still they managed to give us resources so that we can help our residents. For example, the proprietary Chinese medicine and also some anti epidemic packages and so on. And we are very touched by that. And if you look at answer zero two three, well, coming up, there's going to be a maintenance development subsidy and some hundred and thirty five million dollars will be set aside. Mainland institutions or organizations to develop this. That is the support scheme for pursuing development in the mainland. And we're talking about one point four billion people in the mainland. And if we were to do any publicity in the mainland, then we won't be able to even spend ten cents on each citizen or resident. And in order to increase the effectiveness, we will have to spend more. And also after the epidemic, when you leave with mainland institutions, including chambers of commerce. What would be the mode of collaboration? So will there be special arrangements to cross the border? Would that be? Well, business proposals to be introduced. So that we can report more quickly. Thank you. Well, Mr. Lee. Well, I'd like to look at it from a broader perspective. We don't just rely on the hundred and thirty five million dollars are given to the T D C to do it. Because the T D C. Has always attached importance to promoting business on the mainland because mainland has already become the biggest market for us. Accounting for more than half of our business. In the past few years, if you look at the current term of government, if you look at the. The funding that we gave up to the T D C is already. The most that that we have been doing because under the G P A, because of the special status of Hong Kong, we gave them two hundred and fifteen million dollars in five years. And so we've also been helping them to to operate and transform and to tap into the advantage of Hong Kong. But then both online and offline and also in terms of economists, we have been helping them. And something was also given, we have also given them funding for introducing the Go G P A digital platform. And some mainmen, chambers of commerce also said that. Well, some of the. Organizations have been manufacturing on the mainland, but then they've not been able to make use of the internal circulation advantage to do a mean and sale. So those would be additional initiatives or what we've been working on. And on the whole, if you look at our work on the mainland, it's not just about the T D C's promotion work under the C M A B. There are ten. Trade officers and also the T D C's officers and even the. Productivity Council has been working on the mainland as well. And therefore, when it comes to collaborating with mainland institutions, we have been very grateful to them for their help during the epidemic. And we do view them as our very close partners. Next, Mr. Unki Chong. Thank you, Chairman. First, I'd like to declare that I have. Incubators and also businesses both in Hong Kong and on the mainland. I like to know that back in. Well, you have this funding program and how many Hong Kong. Businesses have been helped and are they still in operation? And for those that have ceased operation, have you found out why? They have ceased operations and also for these new startups or international startups, when you promote them. Have you also introduced the idea of our G P A so that these companies would also be introduced into the nine plus two concept? And also this year. You'd be looking at Berlin, San Paulo, Toronto and so on. You're going to organize this some new three, three sixty moments. So what is the, what are the eligibility criteria for including these cities in your plan? Well, I'll ask Mr. Well, Stephen from the Invest Hong Kong to do it.
Thank you. In terms of the startup community, including international startups and G B A. Obviously, T D C and Invest Hong Kong do a lot of work around this. And within our Start Me Up Hong Kong program, we have had specific streams of work relating to G B A. Working with partners on that front. In addition to that, we have a collaborative effort under liaison committee between ourselves, Macau. And the night it is in Guangdong to showcase the opportunities in G B A to companies, including startups. And in terms of the selection of where we're doing the startup salons around the world. That really reflects where we're seeing some of the highest interests from international startups in setting up Hong Kong and also tapping. and also tapping into the opportunities in G B A and just balancing it also geographically. So it's a sort of fair representation of where we're seeing the demand from.
Uh, Stephen, can can you elaborate on how you choose the six sort of designated cities for promotion, which is the first question that the member asked? Stephen.